We will call regular city council meeting June 7th, 2023 at 7:00 PM to order. Please stand and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call please.
Mayor Allison.
Here.
Tom Baylor.
Here.
Kathy Sherman.
Here.
Casey Kinsman.
Here.
Melina Meyer is absent, Anne Schaefer is absent, Kristen Carpenter.
Here.
And Ken Jones.
Here.
That's a quorum of council.
Move with your regular agenda?
Move to approve the agenda for June 7th, 2023.
It moves in segment to approve. I believe we've got a quick executive session right after the agenda is approved that we need to add in there. I apologize, so I have to ask you in a minute to go out before you're there for just a couple of minutes and then we'll come back. Our attorneys need to inform us of something, so anything else on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I would like to move item 3A down to, I guess it'd be, on the,
Twenty-two?
Yeah, twenty, twenty-two A and change the existing twenty-two to twenty-two B.
Wait a minute, what?
He wants to put the harbor commission resolution under new miscellaneous business.
Okay.
An objection to that? Okay, we will do that then.
To twenty-two A.
Three A is moving to twenty-two A before the pending agenda.
Okay, got it.
Okay, anything else on the agenda? All those in favor of approving the agenda as revised, say aye.
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 Votes? Motion carries. We don't have anybody online, correct?
No.
Okay, so I guess we need to think, motion to go into executive session to have a discussion with our attorneys matters.
Number one, financial.
Might have adverse effect on finances of the government.
So moved to second.
Moved to second, any discussion? If you're not all those in favor, say aye.
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 Votes? Okay, we're gonna just go into executive session here real quick. It won't be long. Just ask you to step out as you hear there. Hey, are you back on the record there?
Yes.
Okay, we're back in the regular session. We're on disclosure of conflicts of interest and ex parte communications, which is what the attorneys had to give us a quick, a quick pre-brief on what ex parte communications is. And so now that we all have our update, is there any disclosure of conflicts of interest or ex parte communications? Kathy?
Mayor Allison, I would like to comment on, twelve oh seven. I was contacted by the Forest Service and asked if I had any additional questions and I said no, the packet had suffice.
Okay, any other? Yeah, Councilor Timman?
Also regarding ordinance one two zero seven, I also was contacted by a Forest Service ranger. The same thing, if I have any questions, also I didn't have any questions, reference back to the current agenda. I've also been contacted by constituents and just them voicing their opinion of this particular ordinance one two zero seven, so that's for next.
Okay, Councilor Mayor Baylor?
Yeah, Sam goes with me. I was contacted by Forest Service law enforcement and probably fifteen or twenty other fishermen, gillenders, pilots and others just voiced their opinion on what we are talking about tonight. No new information other than what has already been presented at the last meeting. There's nothing new there, it's all been public information, they were just re-earning that and wanting to know if I had any questions, which I did not.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Mark Harper?
Yeah, I was contacted, oh, I was contacted by constituent about item twenty-one on our agenda. And I, it's an issue that we, that I talked about with this person before and I didn't get any new information, so I just wanted to disclose that.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Seeing no others, we've got communications bio-positions for visitors. We have no guest speakers. So audience comments regarding any agenda item. Mike is, is yours? Don't state your name, address and what item you're speaking to or against.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mike Collins, local aviator. I don't remember which item it was, but it's the airplane float. I just wanted to come and speak in favor of rebuilding it or replacing it or whatever, it's pretty useful. Right now there's five gillenders tied up to it and there's three nets on the dock as we speak. And it gets used pretty regularly. I think there's probably a lot more fishermen that use that dock than pilots. But it is important for an airplane float in the spring when, or for any time during the winter when you can't land on a lake. And it seems like it'd be important to continue to have a floating dock. And then also, there's not that many places to park a float plane on the lake in the summer and it would be, it could be pretty handy, you know, for a transy pilot or whatever, it's on floats that needed a place to park to put an airplane. So anyways, just wanted to speak in favor of that and that's, that's all I got.
Thank you, Mike.
Yeah.
Hi there, Brad Schlesn. Same thing, I just want to speak in favor of the airplane float, net mending float. It's pretty important for the community, several users, gillenders, sailors, pilots. I do think it's important for the community. It gets used in multiple ways and I really think that we need to consider some sort of option for repairing, replacing, relocating any of the options would be better than just getting rid of the airplane float. We've seen it in other harbors throughout the state that, you know, they just kind of get forgotten about or they get left behind. It's a real, it's a bummer that, that, you know, that those harbors don't have that option anymore. So I just wanted to speak in favor of that. And I think there's a lot more people that even, that aren't here that would feel the same way, so that's all I got.
Thank you, thanks.
I guess it's all Franc row people. Nancy Byrd, my address is 101 Lake Avenue. And I'm here to speak on behalf of the birds, not my family, but the birds that fly up there. I think it's item twenty-one on your agenda, the resolution that would negotiate a lease with Camp Two's. And I feel very sad because I love Camp Two's. I think she's done an amazing job for this community and I really would like to support this whole process. But I want to remind everyone how critical those mud flats are to western sandpipers in particular. Some of you may remember the 1989 oil spill and I'm remembering a conversation I had shortly after that spill. Probably in ninety-three, ninety-four, the first year that the herring disappeared. And I was having dinner with an oil representative of one of the tanker companies and I thought this guy was a pretty sharp guy. And he's talking about the herring and the talk that it, the demise of them was because of the oil spill. And he said, I can't believe that. There's the whole Prince William Sound for these herring. And I said, but you don't understand, there are certain areas that the herring come to congregate only once a year. And the oil spill happened to happen right in that area in nineteen eighty-nine. And it took a number of years for it to take its course. But in any case, I just want to remind you that the western sandpiper population entirely comes to Cordova. No place else, the whole worldwide population of western sandpipers. And when they make their migration, there are only two places that they stop for very long to refuel. One of them is in Washington State and the second one is here. And so I just, I think another dredging operation and disturbing those mud flats will have an impact. And I would like to see us do everything we can to keep our western sandpipers healthy. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just three or two?
Yeah, what's that?
Either either two or three.
Any item you want to.
Two.
Is there an item?
Yeah, any agenda item you want to talk to you.
My name is John Fardell. I live at 701 Gray Road here in Cordova, Alaska. I'm here today talking on Camp Two and wildlife, Camp Two's wildlife fish reef. And their interest in item number oh two, oh six, two two, three three. And I want to thank all of you for taking the time to review the agenda. In three minutes, there's no way I can cover everything involved there, so I'll try to just give you some highlights real fast. First of all, Camp Two has to have a dock. We look all over this town, where does she could find property, where does she could donate? You can ask Sam, I've dealt with Sam for almost two years trying to find a location. We've done everything we can and finally they bought property, so they're right upon the edge. The reason I have to have a dock is your account tells them they have eighteen, I mean, eight, twenty-two percent cost if they can put onsite delivery as opposed to having five employees out there on the dock carrying boats, packing all the, all the stuff they have to do. So they have to have a dock. And we all know wherever Camp Two has made any money, what have they done? Passed dollars to the locals. Ask any fishermen if they haven't up their wages, if they've earned income, at least ten percent, most of them are like fifteen. Ask any of the family workers if they haven't up their wages, twenty to forty percent. And so what they can cut to the cost is going to come onto the city, plus we're going to have additional captioning coming, so what's coming in. Now, the reason that they're here is they try to get a simple letter from the city, from anybody, to get support for a local dock. Not, not, you know, just propose a, a, a support. Why? Because you cannot get a core engineer permit without a support from local city. So that's why we're here. The planning told us to get any support at all, we had to apply for a lease. They don't want to lease that line. They don't know where they want to go. They don't know what they want to do. Because until they meet with the core engineers, show the core that they have a dock they want to build, unless the core shows them what's going to be acceptable, we don't know. But planning wants them to apply for a lease, so they have. So that's what we're doing is following through that lease process. And we appreciate the voting for that oh six, two two, twenty-three positively. Because that would give them at least some letter, something to get support from that started. Let's take a year, year and a half. A side note, if they do design a dock, I would recommend that you have them design a dock to full length of all three of those parcels. So the city has smaller dock area. In addition, why not, if they had a nickel off, have a launch ramp? If you built it, if you look at the map, it fits right in with their proposal. Then you have all those listed and set and everything done. So anyway, we'd like to see that happen and we hopefully the vote positive to make that happen. As I tell you, I did have a meeting with Kristen. And you can ask her, did I talk about the dock? No. I asked about habitat because I'm concerned, I'm an environmentalist. Ask anybody about that fine property, all the money I spent during environmental friendly science. I don't want to do something that's going to jeopardize our, our local habitat and no one else should either. And Kristen is really good, knows a lot about that. That's why I questioned her. I'm sorry to talk to Kristen. I didn't, I didn't, I didn't think we were talking about an agenda item. We never mentioned an agenda item during the conversation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Anybody else? Comments on agenda items? Come on up, just give your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Mary Ann Bishop, 704th Street in Cordova. I'm here representing the Prince William Sound Audubon Society, a local organization that I serve as president for. I'm here to speak about item number twenty-one on the agenda. The proposed resolution, oh six, twenty-three, twenty-three, that would give council support for a letter of interest from Camp Two's Alaska Wild Seafoods, requesting to lease tide lands in order to install a dock and to dredge a channel. Specifically, I'm asking council to approve the alternate motion, that is, that city council does not dispose of the requested portion of ATS two twenty. There are several reasons for our request. First, Audubon supports the fishing industry and recognizes that Camp Two's Alaska Wild Seafoods is an important part of this community. However, to our knowledge, both the very brief proposal and the previous reviews of this project have not examined either the serious, serious environmental impacts of the project, nor have they examined the potential alternatives to a dock and dredge channel. First, I'll start with the very real pollution impacts to this proposed dock and dredge channel would bring if built. Tenders are required to constantly pump their bilge and this oily wastewater would be getting pumped out onto mud flats. In other words, it's not going to get flushed very far and it's going to end up contaminating the mud flats. Similarly, when they go to offload their fish, they often pump out the refrigerated salt water. That water's full of slime, blood and scales. Once again, it's going to pollute the nearby mud flats. Those adjacent mud flats are Odiak Slough. In Cordova's recently approved comprehensive plan, Odiak Slough is designated as a low-intensity conservation waterfront. And the reason for its conservation status is that Odiak Slough is the most important in-town habitat for shorebirds and waterfowl. Mudflats are public resources and along with the habitat they provide to animals, they provide benefits including erosion prevention, water purification and recreation and cultural services. We need to protect mudflats for our own human welfare. The importance of the Copper River Delta and Orca Enland to birds has been recognized internationally. Both the proposed project area and Odiak Slough are within the boundaries of the Western Hemisphere Shorebird Reserve Network, designation that the city of Cordova signed along with the State of Alaska DNR, ADFNG, US Fish and Wildlife Service, the Forest Service and the EAC and Chuvatch Native Corporations. This area is also part of the global important area designation of Birdlife International and Audubon. The saying death by a thousand cuts is very real. Shorebirds are declining precisely because of projects such as this proposed dredge channel and docking facility on mudflats. Second, alternatives need to be considered. This dock and channel is not going to take the scales of Camp Two's success, as evidenced by their ongoing expansion. Their fish processing facility has expanded without a dock and while their practice of unloading of the city dock may not be the most efficient, it works. Consider two, the Copper River Seafood offloads fishing with you and trucks set up to their processing plant in Anchorage and still remains financially successful. Another option would be to, to put a pipeline or trough that would move the fish from the city dock to their processing facility. Our point is, there are alternatives. Finally, I want to remind council, there's no need to rush on this matter. This is not a crisis. Future planning needs to include the community. Cordova spent a lot of time and money on the comprehensive plan and that plan emphasized maintaining the quality of Cordova's natural environment. Once again, we respectfully ask council to vote not to dispose of the tide lands AT two twenty, but to instead explore other alternatives. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments regarding agenda items?
Good evening. My name is Kate McLaughlin, 2.2 White Shalode, New York, Alaska. I'm also a member of the Audubon Society, serving as the secretary treasurer. I'll keep my remarks very brief. I'm just here to support both what Nancy Byrd and Mary Ann Bishop has just relayed to you. My main concern is to not add to the degrading of our current environmental integrity. Questions such as where's the fill going to be placed, how's that whole construction going to happen? All these things need to be slowed down and really considered some of the unintended consequences that may happen. Not only for some of the things that Mary Ann may have brought up to, brought up to us tonight, but also simple, just the way of action of these votes going back and forth can cause issues. I also wanted to remind you that the Cordova Shorebird Festival, excuse me, the Copper River Delta Shorebird Festival is quite an economic boon to this, to this town. And Odiak Slough is one of the few places that people who don't have access to boats and planes can come and see these amazing birds at close range. So I really would urge the council to think really carefully about how they might move forward on this project or not. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other comments on agenda items? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to chairpersons or representatives of boards and commissions. CCMC?
She was here, but she shouldn't leave.
Okay, school board? Alex?
Good evening. Alex Ruston, superintendent of schools. I think since our last update, we all experienced graduation, a very successful graduation in year end. We had twenty graduates this particular year. And seventeen of the twenty are planning to do trade school or, or college or university. And the other three are directly entering into the workforce. So we, we think that we had a really good and successful graduating class who have their eyes set on the future. We also had a great sixth grade promotion, so kids will be going from the elementary over to the junior high and starting at the, at the big house, as they sometimes call it. Let's see. We've got our summer school session, our first of three summer school sessions starting on June 12th. So kids will be back in, in school for a little bit of time, doing some summer school sessions. Our food service program is well underway, serving breakfast and lunch for students and we're getting good turnout from there. We are a little bit short on staffing for this summer in particular. We've had office staff and kitchen staff and, and myself in classrooms cleaning and shampooing carpets and things. So if anybody in the audience or any of you all know are retired and want to come out of retirement to help out, we sure could use a hand, particularly this summer. We still have a couple of vacant teaching positions that we're looking to fill. Second special education teacher at the elementary school. And then a second grade five teacher. So again, a shameless plug here, but if you know of anybody that's, that's a teacher looking to, you know, come to Cordova, pass on my contact information and love to have a chance to talk with folks. Beyond that, starting to make plans and do grant applications for next year's operations and so forth. So, so that we can have ourselves in a good position to really provide the resources that the kids will need. With that, so I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions for Alex?
So just as I were, as of right now, just down two teacher positions, is that you're correct, one special ed, one fifth grade?
Correct. Anybody else? Thank you, Alex.
Thank you.
At all? Any at alls out there?
Oh, did I put at all? I did. And others. Because occasionally you let RCAC or anybody else who wants to go. I added the.
Any other boards or commissions that want to speak to us? We have a report from David Jenka, one of the Prince William Sound RCA's board meeting. Packet, student councils on vacation. Can you move to approve the consent calendar?
I can just call the roll on that. It doesn't need a motion, but I don't think anybody's pulling anything, so. Anne Schaefer is absent. Kathy Sherman on the consent calendar?
Yes.
Ken Jones?
Yes.
Tom Baylor?
Yep.
Casey Kinsman?
Yes.
Melina Meyer is absent. Kristen Carpenter?
Yes.
The consent calendar is approved.
Okay, thank you. Our man is ready to move consent calendar. No bids or proposals, contracts to discuss tonight. So moving on to report of officers. The mayor's report, busy week this week with Novo coming up. I think both the city and myself got invitations to the fur's change of command. Postcard cutter fur is having a change of command on July 6th, I believe, 10:00 AM. If anybody wants to go to that, and then they're having an open house at the brewery from ten to, from 12 to two. I believe on the 6th of, of July, if anybody wants to go to that. I think I've got a meeting with the Alieska folks on Sunday morning after Novo. Just like to say hi when they're here, but anyway. And we did meet with the postal service people last Wednesday morning. Melissa and Candace came down and met with a few of us and they had a meeting with the, with the Forest Service with a group up there as well. And they weren't making any commitments to anything other than listening, which is all we can expect. So she did say that they would have to go back and talk to their manager and discuss things with them. And I got a call on Thursday afternoon from Melissa that said that they had met with that person and they were some ideas that he took back that he could do right away and some that he was going to have to chew on for a little bit. But they understand that it's our critical season, busy, as busy as Christmas. And, and they know that it's, it's time to, if they're going to do anything, to do it now. So anyway, that's all I can say to that. They were non-committal on anything and, but certainly came to listen. And I think, I think the community certainly has their attention, but they've got other things to do as well besides us. So anyway, that's my report. If there's any questions, happy to answer them?
Yeah, I've got, yeah, more of a comment. Yeah, we, in this meeting, we, we heard from the lawyers. So going back to some direction, I believe who gave the city manager a while back was that people going to the lawyers, it first needs to come through the city manager for the approval of that because our legal bills are getting out of hand. And I think at that same time, we had a discussion as a council that if individual council members other than, if we're not in a group and we request legal opinion, individual council members should go through the mayor and get, have that discussion and then get kind of approval for that. And hopefully even the mayor sit in on that, on that conversation. It seems like we've gotten away from that. I think perhaps what your recollection is on it, you were on council at the time if you agree with that. And maybe we need to, maybe put something like that on pending agenda.
As I say, in the fifteen years or so I've been involved with council, we've probably had that discussion four or five times. It seems like it has to go every three or four years and then we have to get back in, into that line. But yes, we should have a, you know, council needs to decide what their policy is, but we should have a definite procedure. Everybody shouldn't be able to go to the attorney every, anytime they want to. They shouldn't be going through the city manager or the mayor, I guess, if it has to do with the city manager. But definitely, I shouldn't be calling the attorney on my own unless it's, you know, I would certainly, I wouldn't call the attorney on my own. I would talk to Helen and we would call them if we needed to. I would hope that council doesn't feel like the attorney's phone. And I would hope that council doesn't feel like the attorney's phone number is, there's a call. I haven't looked at a bill recently, and I don't know if we're getting out of hand with their bills. But certainly we need to, we need to keep an eye on that and make sure that it doesn't get out of hand because it does about every three or four years.
Yeah.
Any other questions for me? Who's next? City manager?
Okay, first and foremost, there are financials in this packet dated through April 30th. And we will consistently have monthly reports from now on, I hope. On that note, I wanted to let you know that Mark Weber has decided to retire. I did send you a Paul notice of that, but I wanted to verbally acknowledge that here in front of the body and also to thank her for her many years. She will be with us until the end of December, maybe early January, to assist with transition. But we have advertised the position and if you were of any applicants, I'd always send them my way. Secondly, I want to address some questions that have come up recently in council meetings. I will defer to staff to answer some of those questions or give an update. But I want to, first and foremost, have Kevin give an update on the addressing that we stand. There were questions that came up around the signs that are populating town around land disposal. So Kevin is going to give an update on what those signs mean and what our process is. And then there's been questions too around the environmental work that's been going on at Hollis Hendricks Park. So he will also give an update on that.
Yeah, thank you. So Kevin Johnson, city planner, just wanted to report me about items that Helen just said. So first, the addressing. Yeah, the addressing is basically 99% complete, you know, finding little tweaks here and there. But, you know, if anybody's ever interested in what their address is, they can always reach out. Trying to not let perfection get in the way of good with that so that I can get it finally published in a public way. But like I said, there is still a couple of things that I'm always finding here and there. But I think it's maybe one of those things that we might have to just push out at 99%. And then when people see what the city is saying their address is, if they believe that, you know, historically it should, it's been something else, then that's something that we can handle on a case by case basis and update that database as needed. But also, you know, the whole reason for the addressing project was to implement an E911 system. And so that, excuse me, that has not happened because of lack of funding for the E911 equipment. So we did put the money in to build the database and now it is just sitting waiting for the equipment. Second item, the...
Can I ask a question on that? First, is there a requirement in our code for, once we get this addressing, for me to put that on my house somewhere?
Yeah, there is a requirement for, it has to be certain size letters. It has to be visible from the right of way. So whether it's on your house or if you have a long driveway, then you need to put some sort of sign. I think that's something we'll be working with the fire department. We will be doing the enforcement and education and whatever you know of that. So yeah, that is something that we will need to, you know, slowly work on as well. Thank you.
And if I can add just one thing, we used to have a surcharge on telephone service for E911. And that's something that will be back, bringing back to the body for discussion and consideration.
The second item, yeah, I've heard that some people have been getting calls about the land disposal signs. That is, those are out there because of a code change that the council passed last year where if we change the status from not available to available, that we do this public process where we do a notice sign and mail it to everybody within 30 feet, 30 days prior to the council deciding on whether to approve those proposed changes. The notices that were mailed out are the same that are on the sign. And it has the information about what is happening, the date that the council will be making that determination and how the people can submit comment if they want, whether that's verbal, written, or, you know. So the council will be, that item will be before you on June 21st to make a decision on adopting the 2023 maps. And then the third item that was brought up was the...
NVE, environmental.
Yeah, yeah, I was going to, well, I was trying to give it, I was going to call it work, but I mean, it's not really. They're not doing, you know, anything major. That's part of the NVE clinic exploration that was presented to you. I can't even remember. It feels like a long time ago now, maybe early fall, early, or late fall, early winter, where NVE is looking for proposed locations for a clinic. And so as part of that, they've identified the parking lot area next to Hollis Hendricks Park and potentially maybe having to encroach slightly in to the park, just in that gazebo area. And so they are doing geotechnical and environmental boarding test kits just to see what the composition is for both the soil stability as well as possible contaminations due to the beginning old dump. Again, nothing's been decided on that location. That would have to go through the land disposal process. You know, staff has been in communication with them, you know, letting them know that, you know, if you are going to request any portion of that park, you know, there's going to be a lot of community feedback about that. And I highly suggest that if your proposal, that you are showing how you are going to be doing improvements as well to the park to make up for any loss of park space. So.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Is that the only site they're looking at?
Currently. There, yeah, they're doing that to determine whether to move forward to that or exploring other locations. Whether they've identified other locations, I have no idea.
Right. Thanks.
And this is not new. It was several years ago, they provided drawings of a building there. The council got to look at it, the public got to look at it. And then just a couple of years, two years ago, we also had another discussion. So this is not something new. This has been out there for, gosh, I don't know, five, six years that we've been discussing. And there was plans. Now, those plans, the size of the building may change, but the concept has been there for a long time.
And I want to alert you to the fact that NVE will be here at the next council meeting to give a report on both the hospital project, their community health services, as well as the Shepherd Point Grove project.
Okay. Any questions? Was that it?
Yeah, that's all I have.
Okay, and then next, Colin is going to talk about the harbor. I know there have been questions around docks and the disposal of the docks. And Colin will speak to that as well as some other updates. And I'll turn it over to him. Thanks.
Thank you, Helen. Good evening, city mayor, city council, Colin Bronson. Harbor project. So yes, we've got quite a few things to discuss. First and foremost, probably most pressing for this group and the community is the vessel relocation plan, moving those vessels from the south. Really want to, really need to be in the water through construction in North Harbor. We've got a pretty robust plan. We're working through it. It's a three dimensional chess game and it gets complicated. But we plan to have on 16 June a lottery of sorts where the final folks that meet the criteria that we've set aside that can potentially get a place in the North Harbor, we're going to have that available to the public and let everybody know that we'll find out who gets to go to the North Harbor. And again, a lot can change, not so much between now and the 16th, but as the summer goes on because plans change. So, but in a nutshell, 16 June, we will know who, well, a pretty good idea of who's moving to the North Harbor and also vessels that are going to go to the shipyard as well. Because again, we don't have enough space in the shipyard either. So we've got to prioritize and make it fair to everybody. It can't just be first come, first served. It can't be I really want it. It's got to be fairly random at this point just because we don't have enough space in either the harbor or in the shipyard. So doing our best on that and really pushing hard to make it as fair as possible. I think we've got a really good solution on that and we'll just be working through that process. This week, I've got a meeting with Aliesca on Friday with regards to their concerns for what I just talked about, about making sure we have tier one and tier two vessels in the water. They've got their own requirements. They've got their own contracts. They've got, you know, with the state and with those vessel owners. So we'll talk to them, better understand some of their possible solutions and see what they propose and some compromise perhaps that they can make so that they can other needs met and communities' needs met. But we'll know more about that on Friday. We've also talked about these and their harbor and see what is possible on what slips they have. And it looks like they've got quite a few. It's not ideal. It's Valdez. But there is an opportunity to move some vessels to Valdez. If that works, that kind of fits in with the Aliesca group and the service. So we'll see what's possible there, but they do have a lot of slips available and anticipate plenty. So that's, that's possible. Whittier does not. Whittier has like few and none available for us. And other harbors outside, Seward and the like, that's a little far. But we've really been pushing on Valdez to just see what they, what they can come up with. And it looks like a pretty good option of the, not so great options. We're really even far away from Cordova. Environmental permitting, back to the actual project. Environmental permitting is glacially slow. I don't think that's a surprise to anyone. But when you're on the receiving end of it, it feels really slow. So we're working on it. Everything's in. We're doing the best we can. Got some interesting challenges. And one I'll share with you in particular is the right of way, the fairway coming in from sea through breakwater in the main channel and whether and how G flow sort of impinges or encroaches on that. Now, it's been like that for quite some time. And it's been approved by the Corps of Engineers years and years and years ago, '79, I believe. But they want to know now if that's, if we can still do that. And the short answer is yes, but we've got to go through the process to show that that is still acceptable. So that's not environmental, but that's still big fed permitting process. So we're working through that and we don't see any issues with it, but that was a curve ball that we got just about last week. So we're working through that. And it's been that way. It works for the vessels that we have, two-way traffic. They just want, I think they want to refresh because again, when that was approved, none of us were around, very few. I mean, certainly no one in the corps was around. So I think they need to re-educate themselves on why it is that way and does it work that way. And the short answer is yes, it works just fine. It's been working just for quite some time. So, and then otherwise, environmental permitting is just chugging along. Grants. We've got some grants we're still working on. DeValley, I spoke to them this week and they're still scoring grant applications for our $2 million ask. So if they're scoring this week, I can only imagine it's going to be several more weeks before we get some sort of notification on where we stand with that. Nothing on house approves. Suspect that will be fallout money close to the end of fiscal year, so it means September sometime. Probably just a guess, but that's where the house approves ask stands. There's also a grant that we are researching through the state recreational boating program for sewage pump outs. We've got a sewage pump out designed and planned for the dragdown dock. We've got some money, $25,000 in form of a grant to pay for that. I don't think that'll pay for all of it, but we're weighing right now what the options are for going, shelving that 25 grand from the state and pursuing the state rec boating grant for the same thing. At a minimum, it's 50 grand, as much as $100,000. So that could be a more lucrative opportunity for us. So we just have to see that they've got a match requirement and what monies can be used for that match. So it's another funding opportunity and we'll take every dollar we can get. So with that, we've spent 6.979465 million to date. And by the end of the month, that'll be just over 8 million. We've got 1.3 million invoices in May. And that's all I have.
If you could also speak, because I know this was a question of council last time we discussed. The harbor docks, right now, there's been some conversation about can they be repurposed?
Oh, right.
Want to talk a little bit about that?
Yes, absolutely. So in the contract, in the RFP, and in the contract, it says that we can't do anything with them. Once the contractor starts demolition and takes hold of them, they own them and they are taking them to the landfill. And that's all part of the contract. And there's just liability for the city, environmental issues. We just can't, we can't give them away. We can't auction them off. We can't favor them off. They've just got to go away. They've got to go to appropriate facility, which in this case is our landfill. So that's in the contract and that's been the case since, you know, before my time. So there is no way to get rid of them in any other way, shape, or form that I know of that we didn't discuss. So right now, it's, they all go to the trash. So not ideal, but anecdotally, I've heard stories of the last big harbor renovation where the docks were given away and they're littering the sound in various ways right now. So something we want to avoid and we just don't want the liability of it. And it's all made in the contract that that attorney takes care of that for us. And that's all I have. Any questions?
Are you prepared to speak to, I mean, you're mentioning a lottery system on who gets to move and not trying to be as fair and equitable. I'm hoping that when this decision is made, you'll be able to point out specifically what criteria was met, how you determined the lottery and randomness. Because it's going to come up. Those questions are going to come up.
Yeah, that's a great question. So that's one of the things we've gone through. Several discussion sessions on how do you make this fair? What exactly, what exactly do we need to do to prioritize or do we? Or is it just random for everybody? And it turns out that the best way to do it is people that are living aboard, it's their home. They get top billing. They will be prioritized, number one. Folks that own vessels that can't be pulled out, really can't go anywhere, those are another sort of protected group because you can't put them in dry dock because they're real boats and they'll dry up and they'll have all kinds of problems that dry docking will cause. And then the last group is commercial. No specific commercial, just do you use your boat through the construction period for work? And that could be serves, that could be mariculture, that could be fishing, that could be salvage, that could be anything. Are you, do you actively, validly employ your vessel through the winter, through the construction period? And so that's how we've broken it down. And so really what it boils down to is that those folks in the commercial class are the ones that we cannot accommodate all of them right now. We just, we might, but that's a guess. Because again, it's 500 slips versus 200 slips. It's just not going to shake out evenly. So that's where the randomization is going to come in. It's just going to be a random drawing essentially. So to prioritize that. There's, there's other options that once we, once we go through that and once we get to a place where we fully understand what's available, because people's plans change. They change rapidly, you know, what was, what made sense to them yesterday. Who knows? They might be taking their vessel to Seattle or Homer or whatever. So that stuff could change. There are other options, you know, we talked about can be anchor vessels in the harbor. If that's not a viable option, we just don't have the space for that kind of thing. Can we raft up vessels? That might be an option, but there's liability to the city by rafting up. That also puts tremendous, could put tremendous strain on the existing North Harbor, just adding the weight and the sail area and things like that. So there are some options and there will be, I'm betting some changes to people's plans. And then some people may just say, you know what, I don't need my boat in the North Harbor and they pull it anyway. So those are all the potential changes that we're looking at. Like I said, it's a three dimensional chess game because it's also, what people want today is not what they're going to be thinking tomorrow. So, so that's the way we're going to act today. I'll answer your question.
Perfect. Yeah, I just want to make sure you guys can speak good.
Yeah, that's why we're having this publicly on the 16th. So people will come down and see where they shake out on this. It's right there and we'll be doing the random drawing right there. So it's a, you know, a random number generator where everybody's assigned a number and the number generator that generates the number, that's who gets to pick. So I wish there was a better way. I wish we had another basin to more 500 vessels. But that's where we're at right now. So.
And I want to add one thing that was done, is that surveys were sent out to all North, South Harbor slipholders and required them, I think by the...
31st.
31st of May to let harbor master know what their plans were, if they wanted to be considered. So anybody who did not respond to that survey, and they were given multiple opportunities. I think Colin even made a lot of phone calls. They were given every opportunity. If they did not respond by the deadline, they are not considered for placement, even if they're one of the qualifying groups. So just to be clear on that. So, and I think most people did respond. There might be a couple that didn't, but we've done everything possible to update information, contact folks and the harbor and crew. Hard to be commended for the efforts that went into that.
Okay. No questions?
Thank you very much.
And I have one final thing. We do have some staff changes. I mentioned Mark Weber is retiring. is retiring, Ashley Vivin has appeared on the scene, she is our new museum director, she's replacing Mimi, they're in a transition period together, and we're really looking forward to welcoming her, and she's already doing good work, working directly with Kathy and others, and Mimi leaves at the end of this month, which is very soon. I also want to alert everyone that we are, we have positions that are available for hire, we are short dispatchers, we have a hiring bonus out there of $1,000 to get people in the door, city provides all the training, and it's a great job for people who are interested in service, so that also is out there available. And with that, I will turn it back over to Mayor Allison.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Marbier. Yeah, could you touch on, there's a lot of discussions, Cordova, Alaska is going to move out to the Science Center building and rent, will they need, be collecting taxes for their rent?
So the, any leases that are for, for a for-profit use, even if it's a nonprofit owner, they need to collect sales tax, and that will be true with any of the leases. It's also true that the Science Center is leasing, subleasing the little building here, I can't remember what it's called, in the dock area, yeah.
Seagrass.
Seagrass building, and so they will need to collect sales tax also for that, and they've been alerted to that.
Okay, good. And then, one other comment, today I was out to the water treatment building, and I see on a list of our surveying buildings, it's not on there, but the, what you call the saw, the fascia coming around this 211, that is rotting away, and I think it'd be an easy fix with some metal, I think before it gets into the structure, I think probably should jump up the list, and then around the backside, they, they built a construction for sound deadening, there's a, gosh, I don't know what that thing is, but it, it makes an awfully loud noise as part of their air system reprocess. It's so bad that OSHA came in and several years ago made them, put a building around that's surrounded, because you had to wear earplugs around that building, you could hear it all up on Whiskey Ridge and other places. That building, that part is falling apart, it was really constructed wrong with the wrong materials, and that should probably get addressed by the way, too, so maybe have other works look at that, but I could help out with some suggestions, but it would, I don't think these are expensive fixes, but they should be looked at before it becomes expensive.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions for the management? Seeing them, we'll move on to the charge department.
I'm not going to tell you what I've been doing for a couple of weeks, it wastes a bunch of time while we have a big agenda coming, so I can answer any questions, but otherwise I've just been doing everything I do.
Questions for the firm?
Moving on then to correspondence, we've got a few letters, comments, yeah, go ahead, Tom. So on item thirteen, so I don't know if council has anything to do with this or city, but center package, and perhaps the city planner would know about it, but if you look at this, there's some private property, and there's an access driveway that goes across that private property, it goes right next to the property from the state they're wishing to get, and it crosses private property again, is that going to be two blocks for this other property owner? I'm a little bit familiar with that area, my concern is this, is now would be the time to negotiate right away, and I don't know if that property owner is aware of what's happening, and this could be definitely some good future development for the city, so I would think we'd want to make sure that there was access there, you see what I'm talking about on that?
So...
On page fifteen?
Yeah, all of that's private property.
Right.
We don't, we can't require a right-of-way easement, they're not doing a subdivision, they're buying state land, so yeah, I mean, there's nothing that the city can do to enforce or require a right-of-way through that section.
So basically between the two landowners, so?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Is the landlord, landlord probably would have been noticed, the other landlord, do you think?
I don't know what the state's noticing requirements are for this type of situation, so I'm not certain, I believe they've gotten notices, because I have heard from some of the neighbors who implied that they got a notice.
Okay.
But yeah, I mean, from what I understand, you know, there is an easement for portions of that area, I don't know the full extent of them, whether it goes all the way to back to the Rubio property or not, but yeah, again, there's just, there's no way that we could require that through this process.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on, then to ordnances or resolutions. Ordinance 1205, an ordinance of the council of the city of Cordova, Alaska, amending section 14.24.020 by deleting the definition of vault or rough box and amending 14.24.080c by eliminating the requirement of a vault or rough box, removing reference to vault or rough box and renumbering the burial requirements accordingly, second reading. So moved and seconded. I don't have any further comments that we discussed in the first meeting, I support it. Kathy Sherman? Anybody have anything? Okay, it's a roll call vote.
Yes, on second reading, so on ordinance 1205, Kathy Sherman?
Yes.
Ken Jones?
Yes.
Casey Kinsman?
Yes.
Kristen Carpenter?
Yes.
Tom Baylor?
Yes.
And Melina Meyer and Ann Schaefer are absent, the motion carries five zero.
Okay, thank you. Ordinance 1206, an ordinance of the council of the city of Cordova, Alaska, amending section 14.22, or what, 20, 2090, containers location by changing the section title to containers placement and by adding the following language, containers of refuse shall not be placed prior to 6:00 AM on the scheduled pickup date, and amending section 1.28.085c minor offense fine schedule by changing the title of the reference to 14.20.090 there, as well to 14.20.090 containers placement, also on second reading. So moved.
Second.
Now, again, we, we discussed this once already, I guess I support it, this is an effort to, to decrease the bearer nuisance in the community, and there may be some, some folks out there that have a little trouble with this, but I think the city will work with them and the neighbors and stuff, so I think we've worked through this, I support it.
Mr. Carpenter? Echo those comments.
Anybody have anything else to add? Okay, second reading, the roll call, please.
On ordinance 1206, Casey Kinsman?
Yes.
Ann Schaefer is absent, Ken Jones?
Yes.
Melina Meyer is absent, Tom Baylor?
Yes.
Kristen Carpenter?
Yes.
Kathy Sherman?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. Number seventeen, ordinance 1207, an ordinance of the council of the city of Cordova, Alaska, authorizing the city manager to enter into a 20-year lease with the United States Forest Service for a portion of property described as roughly 4,500 square foot portion of block three, block seven, a tidal development park, on second reading.
So moved.
Second. Carpenter, seconded, Baylor, Councilmember Carpenter.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we've heard some discussion about this already tonight, we've talked about it before, and I am going to be voting in favor of this motion. I think the situation might be different if the timeframe were different, this whole issue would look a lot different depending, but where we are, though, is we've submitted a Port and Infrastructure Development Program grant, the city has in April of this year, and we won't know about that for at least another six months, I don't think. My, the organization I work for, the Prince Ring Sound Economic Development District, received a PIDP grant a year ago, and we don't have a signed grant agreement yet, and they're not going to do construction until summer of 2026. I understand that the grant the city has right now for the South Harbor is a RACE grant, so maybe that's a little bit different, but it's still the same department, the MARAD group, that grant funding was awarded in 2021, and they're going to be starting to move vessels to get ready for construction this fall.
We still don't have a signed contract.
Okay, yeah, so, so I don't see the urgency, I don't see the value in not having revenue for all of that time, even if we find out in October or December that there is a grant, it's still going to be years before something needs to happen in that space. So I think the timing is, it doesn't feel urgent. The comment has been made in the past that the Forest Service shouldn't have a dedicated float, but the Alaska Wildlife Troopers do, I know Councilmember Jones and you shared that information, thank you, where you surveyed other folks in southeast, so every situation's a little bit different. The netmending float and the airplane dock, it's widely acknowledged, I think that those are structures we want, I don't think anybody disputes that, you know, the staff have agreed, I think the council has supported that 100%. I am not going to second guess engineers and all that, how that gets laid out in the harbor, so, but I support it 100%, I don't think anybody's disagreeing with that. Hopefully we get the funding and we can do that, but I think all the council and the commission records reflect that, that folks are in support of a netmending and a float plane dock. I did notice on the most recent, I know the Harbor Commission has looked at this issue a bunch over the years, and the most recent resolution from March 17th, the last whereas reads, "Discussions lately between city staff and U.S. Forest Service staff have been agreeable, and both sides understand that the future may bring re-convicured docks in our plans, both are committed to revisit the lease if a need provises." And the Harbor Commission said, "Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Cordova recommend city council approve a U.S. Forest Service lease with the 16-month termination clause," which is, I think, the document that everyone has, is the most recent that they ever were considering, so. And I guess, lastly, I want to say, I, I know this isn't necessarily a policymaking, something we should absolutely be making policy on, but I do want to say that relationships matter, and I feel like the Forest Service has been a, a super strong partner in so many things that happen in this community, and I think we've all benefited from a good turn, an active support or understanding, we've probably experienced at all levels, family, friends, bankers, working with business owners, and I think it applies at the local government level, too. The Forest Service staff participate in every festival this community puts on, so shorebird, Fourth of July, fungus festival, ice worm, salmon jam, and all of those bring in visitors from out of town, so we wouldn't have a shorebird festival or a fungus festival without the Forest Service, they play a pretty big role in salmon jam, but those beds, the 200 beds in town that we have, they're filled for shorebird festival and salmon jam, and those people come in on Alaska Airlines and they stay in local lodging, and they generate sales tax, so it's a, it's a huge asset that, that the Forest Service plays in a lot of the, I guess what some people might call soft, you know, it's not, they're not hard and fast, not like infrastructure that you can point to, but they're a huge resource in this community, and I want to support that, and I, like I said, I don't see conflict with the timing, we don't know, even know if we're going to have the funding, so I, I don't think there's any, any crisis with signing a lease that has a 16-month termination clause. Those are my comments, thank you.
Mayor Allison, may I interrupt? I just want to draw your attention, because at the last meeting, you would ask staff to make contact with Forest Service and make some revisions, which did happen, so I just want to make sure that you all know that we, our job as staff is to provide you with the information you request and the information you need to make your decisions, and so Kevin did negotiate an annual CPI rent increase, which was not in the last lease. We did have a conversation with him about reducing the lease from 20 years to a smaller number, but in our conversations with them, it was decided that it basically, in their mind, is a 16-month lease with options to extend as long, as long as 20 years, so in their mind, and certainly in ours at this point in time, if, if at any point in time we can get out of the lease with 16, 16 months notice, that is the duration of the lease, it just keeps us from having to renegotiate what is a very comprehensive process for leases with the federal government, so. And Kevin, I don't know if you have anything else to add to that, but, oh, and there's also some additional information, I think the Forest Service provided some information around some other facilities they have in southeast that are permanent, and Councilmember Jones provided some information around what other communities within the Sound are doing with their facilities, so it's just information for you, but I just wanted to make sure you knew we had addressed your concerns, and that those updates are in the lease proposed in front of you now.
Councilmember Baylor?
Yeah, I supported this last time, and based on Harbor Commission's recommendation, I, I probably will support it again, Kristen Carpenter made some good points there, and I agree with, I don't see where this would exclude the netmending area, or I don't think it can go, it's my understanding, you can't go with the Forest Service stockings anyway, because there's not enough tide here, it goes dry, maybe I'm wrong in that, but unless I hear something different that would persuade me, I, I would tend to support this based on the Harbor Commission's recommendation.
Okay, Councilmember Schaefer is not here, I'm just going down my list here, Meyer is not here, so Councilmember Sherman?
Sure, I've spoken in favor of this before, but I was happy to see the CPI included in there, and I'm, thanks for the explanation on the number of years, but to me, it's a 16-month lease as well. I think Councilman Carpenter was looking over my shoulder at my notes, because she covered everything, I was thinking about, again, timing.
We didn't talk about it.
Yeah, sorry. Timing was the one thing I thought about, as someone who's dealt with federal grants, and I want to just emphasize one more time, that I think everyone on city council is in support for the replacement of a plain float and a netmending float, we understand how important those are to our community, and yeah, other than that, adding in the CPI would make me happy, so I'm in favor of it.
Okay, Councilwoman Kinsman?
Yes, thank you. These are good comments, and I'm thinking a lot about this one. I understand that this has been going on before I've sat in this seat, and so I have to take that into consideration, that the work that's gone to it, the tax dollars that have gone into this deal and this lease, my, my concern over this is we're just kicking it down the road, is that if this, this base has to move, let's, 16 months, we have 16 months, sounds like a great, wonderful number, gives us warm and pleasy, realistically, nothing's going to happen in 16 months, if we exercise that and they have to move, now we're, we're evading the Forest Service, and they're not going to have a solution in 16 months, I mean, that's not how the federal government is going to move, so now we're, again, just pushing this down instead of coming up with a plan today of, let's come up, let's, this is my dilemma, of let's, and, and not renewing this lease and, and putting them in a position to find a sustainable new location within our harbor basin, and I know those conversations are even had, given the support from the Harbor Commission, I will likely support this, but that, that's, that is my dilemma, that we're pushing this down the road, is this, you know, especially if we get funding and, and they need to relocate, that is, I think, going to be more of an issue, and it's going to require more time than the 16 months. Again, it's great for the city, it allows us, it's a 16-month... Again, it's great for the city, it allows us, it's a 16-month lease, we can say all that, but if they're needed and their services are needed, I really, really hope that the Forest Service is being proactive on this and looking very seriously at other places where they can go. And not waiting until sometime down the road or maybe a different administration comes in and they can worry about it. I mean, the time now, the time is now for them to be proactive on it. So that would just be, I guess, my comments on that.
Councilmember Jones.
Yeah, so I've heard that, you know, Harbor Commission supports this and they don't. They have given us multiple resolutions supporting a short-term lease. This is a 20-year lease, this is not a 16-month lease, it's a 20-year lease. The infrastructure's been in place for over 55 years. We have multiple public documents, harbor master plans, PIP drawings that have identified this location for a potential expansion of the harbor. First, we thought about putting stalls in it, then we wanted to put a floating fuel dock there. Every time this comes up, this lease hangs over all of those discussions and all of the planning. And it makes it where the Harbor Commission can't even discuss the, you know, putting in a netmending or an airplane float. The city staff was reluctant to even put it in the drawing because it's a controversial topic. And I think it's time to rip the Band-Aid off. I will not support this whatsoever. We told the Science Center they had to move out and they got their act together and built a building. And the Forest Service has not. So I think it's time to rip the Band-Aid off. And we heard from the Forest Service representative last meeting, that he has not evaluated any other locations or any other alternatives because this is what they're pursuing. He has not evaluated any sort of a compromise. The commission proposed three or four different compromises, he didn't even evaluate them at all. Wasn't interested in it whatsoever. So I think it's time that we vote this down and it'll force them to evaluate compromises. And as far as the timeframe, you know, we had Shoreside here tonight say that they want to put a floating fuel dock in. We don't need the PIP project to put a floating fuel dock in if we get rid of this Forest Service dock. It could go right there. We can put a floating fuel dock in this fall. It's a, yes, we're trying to leverage those private dollars as a match to get a bigger project, but if we don't get that PIP project, we could just put a floating fuel dock right there. You know, we have an opportunity to evaluate relocating the existing airplane float. It's later on our agenda. I, last meeting, tried to put this, you know, off until October so we could see what happens with PIP money. I don't understand the rush to enter into a long-term lease. Yeah, I'm not going to support this. I think it's blocking future development, it has been blocking future development and it will continue to block future development for the next 20 years.
Okay, round two. Carpenter, do you have any comments?
I don't know. Just that as long as we don't have a signed lease, we're not getting any revenue from that spot.
Councilmember Baylor.
Yeah, but revenue is nice, but it's not my driving factor as far as this decision goes. In the last meeting, Shoreside, representatives from Shoreside did address us and I think I did ask the question, is the Forest Service dock going to hinder their progress in putting the fuel dock in? And they said, no, there's enough distance there. Now it's being mentioned that that's where the fuel dock would go. So there's confusion there, I don't know how we can clear that up. But it was my understanding that the fuel dock was not going to be close to the Forest Service dock.
I can briefly address, obviously, whenever you deal with fuel dock, you have a lot of environmental issues and a lot of complexity there. You heard this issues right now with the environmental approvals for this South Harbor. So we have a proposed spot, which is where the Science Center building is right now. That's where the floating fuel dock would go. But again, all of those decisions would be based on a lot of environmental work that would have to be done and approved in advance. So that's going to be somewhat of a lengthy process, as we all know. But right at the moment, the conceptual plans put the floating fuel dock where the Science Center building is out there. And the existing drives for that PIP grant includes the Forest Service building staying where it is. But again, if there was any reason why environmental engineers would say we would need to move the floating fuel dock, it could possibly, the Forest Service building could possibly be in the way for that. So there's still some considerations. And again, the 18-month lease, I do believe that the federal government, when they sign a lease, they are on, they have to honor the 18 months. So I, sixteen months, excuse me. The sixteen months, I was thinking of gestation of elephants, which is what this feels like, quite frankly. So sixteen months, they would be hard pressed to not honor the terms of the contract.
Okay, and then I think literally for them to move is basically would be moving their boats to a slip in the harbor and then emptying out their warehouse to their current warehouse. Is that, I guess I'm not seeing too much of a delay there. But I guess I got to go back to the, you know, the Harbor Commission is supporting this, we're just here conflicting on that, so that would, that gives me pause. I'm not totally sure on this, my statements made that we were told that we couldn't have the netmending. I assume that it was a part of the grant system that they said probably would not get the grant with it in there, was that the case?
The PIP grant includes a lot of infrastructure, which includes a netmending and air, I think it's just netmending, I don't think it's the airplane float. This South Harbor, we don't have the option of keeping that infrastructure in place, nor do we have the opportunity to relocate that infrastructure. So that's off the table. And any airplane float and netmending float would be built with new dollars and a location that at this point in time accommodates all the users. But again, there are some questions based on final design work and environmental.
And am I correct, and I think I made a statement for the question, whether the netmending airplane float go where the Forest Service dock is currently located? Wouldn't that not have to be dredged out considerably for that to remain floating all the time? Was that a consideration or is...
So the plans right now do not put the netmending float where the Forest Service infrastructure is. And again, it would, there would be a lot of dredging involved, no matter what, I believe, to make any of that infrastructure happen.
Thank you.
And that involves environmental, big time environmental.
Councilmember Sherman, say it again.
I have one more comment.
Okay, Councilmember Jones.
Yeah, thank you. So this area would not have to be dredged to put a netmending float there, depending on how you orient it. If you wanted to put it where the old grid is, then yeah, it would have to be dredged. But there is enough space there to put a netmending float without any dredging and have access to all four sides of it. If you look at a satellite map, you can pretty easily see that. As far as the Harbor Commission's support, the Harbor Commission has supported a short-term lease multiple, multiple times. That was with the acknowledgement that it was renewing in 2020 and, or the lease was expiring in 2020 and they asked for no more than a three to five-year lease. It's now 2023, so that's year three. And in this term, this latest one, they supported the 16-month termination clause. They did not support a 20-year lease. So I'm on the Harbor Commission, I took part in those discussions, it's in front of us. There was discussion about supporting the leases written. That support was removed as part of our discussion and the commission only decided to support the 16-month clause because we were not given the lease to review and we were not, yeah, we were not in favor of a 20-year term. So we decided that it would be best to just support a lease with an included 16-month termination clause. Yeah, the, the Congress, or the, the thing that I alluded to earlier about city staff telling us that the netmending float was a controversial issue was part of the 2021 PIP proposal. And when we wanted and identified this location, it was on that map. That was the report we got back from city staff, is that all that'd be hard sell, that's a controversial one. That's really council's decision on if they're going to release that or not. That's not really something the Harbor Commission can decide, well, you know, we had just a bunch of sidestepping of the issue. And so that's why I think it's time that we just rip the Band-Aid off. We can't even properly plan for our North Harbor project because of this lease. And I think it's time to terminate, make a move out and then we can start our planning. Because right now, it's cast a shadow over the entire thing. As we've heard, it's been going on for four years. So every time we look at the area, it's like, for whatever reason, it's not even in, it's not even in the ballpark to suggest relocating them. And they were just completely, you know, completely opposed to any sort of common sense solution, you know, we, throughout, what about giving you guys stalls right at the bottom of the ramps? Nope, that doesn't work. What about keeping the building and giving you stalls? Nope, that doesn't work. Only thing that works for them is they want to keep what they have and nothing else has even been considered. And we heard that at the last city council meeting, he said that on record. So, yeah, I do not support this at all and I would urge other council members to vote against this.
Councilmember Kinsman, last chance.
And my, and my thinking on this is, we can throw up revenue, that's fine. And yes, that is a thing. But I link towards, if we don't support this, then that gives us an opportunity to enter into a different negotiation with them in the sense of, do we enter into a fair and reasonable Exodus clause for them of, we'll give you 24 months to keep this space and look and relocate to a different position? I know that's not what we're voting on, we're voting on, do we support, are we entering this lease or not? And I really struggle with passing the buck down the road. That is something that is to the demise if we look at anything beyond a local level. This is what we see happening at a state level, things we see happening at a federal level and see across our country of just not wanting to make a hard decision in the moment and pass it for someone else. So that's, I can, and I, it is a little bit, and looking and reviewing the Harbor Commission's support, it is true, it is a little bit, I guess, deceiving in the sense that, yeah, there isn't any updated or current support in it. I mean, looking back at the dates on these are back from, back from March, none of them referencing 20, 20 years. So, I...
Okay, as this is the second reading, it requires four positive votes. Are we ready to vote or any last comments?
I guess I do have just one last comment. I'm, I'm, I think a lot of, my understanding is a lot of what's talked about happening in the North Harbor is dedicated on having money. And we don't have money. We still have to come up with $3 million to make the match for the South Harbor rebuilt, is, I think is where we're at. So, and I understand if the grant that we just applied for doesn't come through, that that doesn't mean we don't want to do any of that stuff, we just drop it, but it means we have to do it in a much more piecemeal way? I mean, it's not like we're going to be able to have all the bells and whistles. So I don't, I just don't see it being, having the duck where it is now being an impediment either way. If we get the funding, they've got a 16-month termination clause they have to honor. If we don't get the funding, we're going to have to, like I said, piecemeal our way through some work and then it's really going to require some hard thinking and head scratching about what do we do first? Because there's a lot of things we want to have done. If you look at the PIP application, that did get submitted for, for the North Harbor. I mean, it looks terrific on paper. We want all of it, but I don't think we can have all of it. And so that's, I guess, why I don't see this as a super urgent thing. I don't think 16 months is going to hurt us. Thank you.
Okay, last, last chance. Senator Jones.
Yeah, so I guess one of my comments earlier that I forgot to touch on in my second chance there was, you know, this is blocking a potential location for a floating fuel dock, so it's not the one that's proposed currently. What I was meaning is we, when we went through this disposal process four years ago, city council decided not to put it out for RFP. They chose direct negotiations with the Forest Service. At the time, Shoreside had an active letter of interest for a floating fuel dock somewhere. The exact footprint of this lease could be a potential location for a floating fuel dock without any other project, without any PIP grant dollars. The dock is blocking a potential location of a floating fuel dock. Private industry is willing to fund putting a dock in. We didn't even get to have that conversation because it was directed to go straight to negotiations with the Forest Service. So that location was not, you know, was not evaluated by Shoreside because it's leased to somebody else. So I think that as it sits right now, it is blocking potential for expansion in that area because it's blocking a potential location for a fuel dock. It would be very easy for Shoreside, without any sort of PIP funding, to just put a fuel dock there. We just never gave them that opportunity. So, yeah, I'll be voting out.
Well, just, I understand what Councilmember Jones is saying, but if Shoreside or anybody else were to come forward with a legitimate proposal to utilize that, firstly, has to get evaluated by the planning zoning department, then it comes to council, then they're going to have the long task of getting it through environmental applications and a lot of other things. So I think once it got, a legitimate proposal came through, once it got through the planning zoning, come to council, then it's time to notify the Forest Service that we have a potential customer for this area and you have 16 months if they get their permits to move. I mean, I think that's the way this is set up, right?
Yeah, that's correct. The other piece though is, and I think this is one of the things we're trying to be really mindful of, whenever we plan things now, is not plan around a single user, but to plan comprehensively around the best use of a space, in this case, the Harbor Basin. So we've had a number of engineering companies, design firms, looking at the space and identifying the best possible use. The Forest Service dock could be used by anybody needing a dock technically. I don't know off the top, I know Councilmember Jones has a very clear idea of this space but, and what maybe could go in places, but I also think we would all have to defer to the engineers and the folks who really understand the capacity of that space. But bottom line is, it's not about a single user, it's about the best use of the space so that we don't really, and I use this a lot in my conversations with staff, we don't have a Frankenstein moment where we've created things that don't fit or aren't right or block things. So, and back to Councilwoman Jones' comments, we are really looking at any infrastructure that's built. Um, we are really looking at any infrastructure that's built is built to the maximum best use of the space. And it could be that a floating fuel dock might make sense where the Forest Service, um, space is. Um, those aren't the drawings that we've been shown. Um, and, um, again, there's been a lot of work put into design work. So, um, we'll, uh, we'll have to see what happens when we get the funding. But, um, again, it's not a single user objective here. It's best use.
One more comment, I guess, overall picture of it. I think the council has, I think we verbally committed. I don't know if we put in writing, what's it, $3.7 million to bring this project home?
Yes.
Which does not include the net mending on dock. I don't know. We haven't heard numbers on that. Is it gonna be, if we're to build ones at a million dollars or $2 million? But I would suggest to you, it'd be a hard sell to the taxpayers of this community to pull out another $2 or $3 million just for that one little project. So then the question would be is, where are you gonna get the money to build this? And if it's gonna be grants and other things, it's gonna take some time to find those funds. Uh, I know we're gonna have a discussion later on here, but, um, that's another thing I'm thinking about is... It's not like we've got money in our pockets where we make this decision we're gonna go build it next year. It's, there's no money right now for that. And the city doesn't have the money to do it. So I guess I'm gonna stick with the resolution from the Harbor Commission at this point. Okay, ready to vote? Let's go to Rome.
Okay. On approval of ordinance 1207. Tom Baylor?
Uh, yes.
Casey Kinsman?
I'm gonna vote no.
Ann Schaefer is absent. Kristen Carpenter?
Yes.
Ken Jones?
No.
Melina Myers absent. Kathy Sherman?
Yes.
So that's a 3-2 vote, and it requires four yeses for second reading on the ordinances, so that fails.
Resolution 062320. Resolution of the Council of the City of Cordova, Alaska, setting the property tax mill levy for the 2023 tax year at 10.02 mills for all properties in the City of Cordova. So moved.
Second? Go ahead.
Sorry, Tom.
You got it. I don't want to talk taxes.
Councilmember Carpenter?
So, this was the rate, um, that was calculated, I think, to bring in the same amount of revenue that we have this year. It's, uh, around 2.8 million. And it's obviously a lower mill rate than we've had before, but the assessed values have gone up, so that is how it balances out. And I, um, moved this to get it on the table so we could discuss it. And, um, yeah, I will be interested to hear what others are thinking about what our mill rate should be and how we, um... But make sure we have enough revenue for all of the things that we say we want to do. Because that's always an issue, and there's always needs that come up that we haven't anticipated. And, um, I guess I, I, I would like to hear from discussion. Do we want to shoot for that same number? Do we want it to be a little bit higher so that we have some questions? I don't know. So, thank you.
Councilwoman Sherman?
Um, I also wanted to have a discussion, um, and hear what other council members thought. I think, um, we're well aware that the prices went up this year and that it was a reassessment. I think it's, um, so, um... Anyway, I, I know that that's a hit already to locals, but, um... I, I am still concerned because now we need money for our airplane float and lots of other things too, so, um... But I'm willing to, I'm open for discussions.
And I think the schools asking, I think tonight is for another $137,000 or something. Uh, let's move my, my list. Councilman Baylor?
Well, staff, I'll just point out this number. This is what you needed to run the city for the year.
You approved a budget in December for this calendar year. So this mill rate reflects the budget numbers that were approved by council. Um, and that's the extent of it. And so if you want to make any adjustments, um, for additional revenue, we only, um, put forward the mill rate as a way to raise the necessary revenue to fulfill the approved budget.
And we went, I mean, the group of us went through the budget. We approved the budget. Is there any, from that time until now, is there anything that came up that is kind of red flag? That you said, oh, my gosh, we're gonna need more money, or are we good?
We're good. We're using ARPA funds and other resources that go above and beyond. But, um, you know, we're six months in. There might be things that do come up. Um, I, at this moment, can't anticipate them. But, um, that's discussion that you can have if you want to increase. I think one of the things that I am aware of is that, um, we are not rebuilding our pinky bank, if you will. Um, we just made a commitment of up to almost $4 million to help with the South Harbor budget problem. That was unanticipated. We thought we had the grant funding for it, um, and the costs just went through the ceiling. So, you know, it's those kinds of things that we can anticipate, and we need to be mindful of as we move forward and to have enough in the pinky bank to cover those things. So there might be an adjustment that you guys want to make in that regard.
Schools have asked for more. The, uh, Ski Hill has, has quite a capital list. There are some things we know about.
Yeah, but we've, we looked at all those things when we approved our budget. I don't think anything's come new since I have the...
The, the school's got a proposal for an additional, uh, I can't remember off the...
$137,000.
Yeah. Uh, but we can, uh, that, their school year straddles our fiscal year, so we can actually look at that, uh, as part of the 24 budget. I haven't seen anything from the Ski Hill yet, so I don't have any idea what that looks like. Um, I think they're going to present, uh, the next meeting, but the first meeting in July, so we'll have a sense of that. I'm going to guess that any work that they're doing won't happen this summer because if, if it's major stuff, they won't have time to do it before the ski season starts. I could be wrong. But that's certainly a consideration. And again, I don't know how much they're asking or what their needs are.
Tom?
Yeah, I guess I'm, I'll go with staff right from the day.
Councilmember Jones?
I'll support it as written. I, I do not support, um, a higher mill rate than this. I, I think that we talked about this during the budget. And this, uh, reducing it from the 11.54 last year to 10.02, keeps the same budget line item and gives a little bit of a break when we already just raised our assessments across the board. So, um, I support it as written.
Councilmember Kinsman?
I just don't understand this graph correctly. We're, we're still looking at a 4%. And, I mean, we're, we're just in close, but it's still a 4% increase. Is that how I'm...
I did this spreadsheet and...
Based off an assess, based off the current assessment?
Right. What I did at, at the bottom of that spreadsheet on 74 is I said, say there was a house that was 350 value in '22. Well, if it went up about 20%, which a lot of people did, some went up more than that. And you took the two mill rates and you find out what the taxes are for each year, even the drop to 10.02, this person is gonna pay a little bit more in taxes.
I, I, I can agree with staff on this, but I, hopefully, in coming months, we have some serious conversations on how we're gonna raise revenue or add all the things that we want funded, the community wants funded. That's, um, three, so...
Okay, anybody need to run two?
Yeah, I've got a quick question.
Yeah, go ahead.
What? So the school's gonna be asked for another $100,000. Just what would it take, 10.3 to get a $100,000? What would it take?
$160,000. Each mill gets you $279,000, so...
Another half a mill. So another half a mill, okay.
They're asking for 161. But Helen talked about how we straddle the year with school. We've done that the last few years. And then budget for it in '24. Only because my office is the one who deals with the people with the assessment notices and the appeals. And council has been fairly consistent over the last several years at taking the mill rate that puts what is budgeted, unless there is some specific item called out, I guess, six months into the year. Um, well, this year, with the very many number of appeals and the very many number of people whose, uh, assessed values went up considerably, a lot of them on the phone, you know, when we said, doesn't mean the taxes will go up. That comes when you, when council sets the mill rate in June. Some of them took what we said and didn't appeal their value. So it's gonna be hard to be in my office tomorrow if you guys go up from 10.02.
Any other questions, gentlemen? Is this also a four vote on the resolution?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Nope.
All right, let's go.
On the mill rate of 10.02, resolution 62320. Kristen Carpenter?
Yes.
Kathy Sherman?
Yes.
Tom Baylor?
Yes.
Melina Myers absent. Ann Schaefer's absent. Casey Kinsman?
Yes.
Ken Jones?
Yes.
Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you. Number 19, resolution 062321. A resolution of the Council of the City of Cordova, Alaska, establishing the level of local funding and approving the budget of the Cordova Public School District for fiscal year ending June 30, 2024. So moved.
Second?
Councilmember Kinsman?
Um, I, I think we had a great work session with them. They outlined, uh, pretty clear that I don't have a lot more to add. Obviously, open to any conversation, and that's why I'm working forward.
Councilmember Carpenter?
Yeah, ditto. Yeah. Supporting the motion, getting it on the table so we can have a discussion.
Councilmember Jones?
I will support it because we can, uh, you know, like what was said earlier, we can split the increase into next budget cycle so we can properly budget for it, not have a budget amendment in the middle of the year.
Councilman Baylor?
I'll support it.
Councilmember Sherman?
I'm also in support.
Okay, so we're ready to vote.
I mean...
Yeah.
You can do a voice if you want. We're, I can do a roll.
I can roll, of course.
Okay, sure. Um, on 62321. Casey Kinsman?
Yes.
Ken Jones?
Yes.
Kristen Carpenter?
Yes.
Ann Schaefer is absent. Tom Baylor?
Yes.
Kathy Sherman?
Yes.
And Melina Myers absent. Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you. Resolution 062322. A resolution of the Council of the City of Cordova, Alaska, authorizing the city manager to negotiate and grant a right-of-way easement to the native village Odeak for the Shepherd Point Road project. So moved.
Second?
Move and consider. Councilman Baylor?
Uh, I have no reason not to support this, so at this time, I'll support it.
I, I think there are, um, two people from the state right away that may call in if you guys have questions. So does anybody want them on the line right now or not?
Do you want a staff report first or... There'd be, there was a lot of pages to this, so you ran it all.
And there was a presentation at the last meeting. So, um, if there are any questions, certainly Kevin, Sam, somebody can address. I think there was issues around, um, access to the, um, water, um... Stillway, whatever it's called, and that was addressed. So I, I don't know if there's any specific questions, but we have staff here.
Well, this is going on with this, and... Councilwoman Sherman?
Um, no, I'm, I'm in favor of this and staff's recommendations.
Councilmember Jones?
Uh, yeah, I'll support it.
Councilmember Kinsman?
Yeah, I'll support it. I think there's some overall benefits that will, uh, come to added benefits that'll come to our community, so, yeah, I'll support it.
Councilmember Carpenter?
I'll support it.
Those people waited up all night. It's okay.
Let's do a roll.
Okay, on 62322. Ann Schaefer is absent. Kristen Carpenter?
Yes.
Ken Jones?
Yes.
Casey Kinsman?
Yes.
Melina Myers absent. Tom Baylor?
Yes.
Kathy Sherman?
Yes.
Motion carries 6-0.
Okay, Act 21, resolution 062323. A resolution of the Council of the City of Cordova, Alaska, supporting Camp Two's Alaska Wild Seafoods proposal to excavate highlands to create access to a proposed dock facility in the South Vale and authorizing the city manager to enter into negotiations with Camp Two's Alaska Wild Seafoods to lease the area.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to approve resolution 062323 to dispose of a portion of ATS 220 as outlined in Cordova Municipal Code 5.22.060B by number one, negotiating an agreement with Camp Two's Alaska Wild Seafoods to lease or purchase the property.
Uh, second, yeah.
Okay, Councilmember Jones?
Yeah, I, uh, I support this. I think Camp Two is a lot of good for the fleet, for the community. Um, I think this is a pretty common sense use of the space. I don't see it as disturbing too much of the mud flat. I could totally understand some of the concerns, um... But I, I think that, you know, a lot of this mud flat was greatly diminished prior to 1964, and I think that there's still gonna be a lot of mud flat left. So I think the birds will be fine. And this, uh, area is going to benefit this business, which will benefit the entire community and will benefit all the ancillary, ancillary businesses of fishermen that fish for them. And, um, it'll also reduce the wear and tear on the city infrastructure that they're currently utilizing, that we just spent a couple hundred thousand dollars replanking a few years ago. And, uh, it'll begin to get the forkless off of them. So for that reason, I'll support it.
Councilmember Baylor?
Yeah, I'll support it. Um, I'll listen to anybody that, I'll speak against it, but at this point, I don't think it changed that much, so I will support it.
Councilwoman Sherman?
I'm in support of this and developing the marine area. And I also think I'd like us to be very cognizant of the remainder of Odeak Slough and, um, the benefits of, of the natural environment and the habitat. Um, and like we, the Breakwater Trail, I think we should, um, think about things that can also, um, improve access to the wetlands and to the walkable areas, um, in our community. Um, so I don't, I'm not against development. I understand the wear and tear on the Harbor Dock, the city dock, the old city dock. Um, and I appreciate the business, um, that has been brought forward. So I, I, I'm hoping that the process will, um... The permitting process will identify some, any habitat concerns that we might have.
Councilmember Kinsman?
Yeah, I'll, uh, definitely go ahead and, I think this sounds like a pretty good improvement for our community. Um, I, I would, um, I don't know, with Camp Two and our establishment here, we've heard from them, um, I think it would go a long way to the community if, if this is approved for you guys to, um, put for... put forth some good effort in, in environmental conservation in that area, uh, providing access to the mud flats, and as we were talking about for shorebird, um, I think that would, uh, go a long ways in this community. I will support this, but please keep that in consideration.
Councilmember Carpenter?
Surprise, surprise, I don't support it. Some people might surprise, but, um, a, and it's not that I don't support what Camp Two has done for this community, when I first met Camp Two, she started out as a seamstress in the old DMV office in the CEC building, and so she has clearly uh, made a huge economic contribution to this community, so I, I, I recognize that. But I also am aware that we are losing tide flat habitat worldwide, and it doesn't seem like it's a big issue, but you have, um, one species in particular, the longest migrating species, the, um, Hudsonian or marbled godwit, I'm not, or maybe it's
Hudsonian.
Hudsonian godwit, um, and we get martel godwits, uh, out on those mud flats in addition to several other shorebird species, and they're worldwide species of concern, and the mud flats are, um, mud flats and wetlands both are like nurseries for our oceans, so you don't have uh, food systems if you keep losing the mud flats. The tenders are gonna be going in and out of that channel, their bilge pump runs constantly, they're not allowed to turn it off, so they're gonna be pumping out oily bilge straight into that water, which is gonna be deposited on those mud flats, it's gonna be, I mean, people say it's not an environmental concern, but it will be, um, the, the dirty secret, I guess, that we have now is that those tenders come into the harbor with their bilge, it's discharging all the time, but the harbor is contained. There's not as much flushing in the harbor as there is out in the inland. And so all of that stuff is gonna get deposited on those mud flats. And so it's not just a, a localized effect, I think, of those tenders going in and out. Um, and I think it was mentioned earlier, and I've heard this comment made before, uh, Copper River Seafoods trucks their seafood from Whittier to Anchorage all the time, every day, all summer long, and they're still being financially successful. I'm not insensitive to Camp Two's wanting to cut their costs and, and get more efficiencies out of their operation. I don't have great solutions, I offered a solution about a year ago when I was talking to John Harville about the idea of a pump, um, setting up the fish pump along the Breakwater, I understand that pumping Copper River Reds is not desirable because that could adversely affect the quality of those fish, I'm, I, I accept that, though, you know, that's not, uh, an argument you can overlook. So, um, but I do just think in terms of what's happening worldwide with mud flats and tide lands and wetlands, um, that we're losing critical habitat, and it's not just a localized effect, you have to look at whole systems conservation, what's happening in, uh, with the invertebrates and, um, other organisms in the mud, and what does that do to feed the nearshore environment with, uh, juvenile fish, um, in that area, and uh, so for that reason, I am not gonna support it, thank you.
Okay, anybody take, take a round? Ready to vote?
Okay, on resolution six twenty-three twenty-three. Kathy Sherman?
Yes.
Ann Schaefer is absent, Casey Kinsman?
Yes.
Melina Myers is absent, Ken Jones?
Yes.
Tom Baylor?
Yes.
Kristin Carpenter?
No.
Motion carries five-one.
Okay.
Five?
Three's a step.
Four-one?
Four-one.
Sorry. No, what do you mean? Haven't we been six all night?
No, there's five of us here.
No, I've been saying six all night?
Yes.
Sorry. Everything's been five all night. Why didn't you guys correct me before?
Okay, back to item three A. Harbor Commission Resolution oh-five twenty-three oh-two. Requesting funding to relocate or replace an old airplane float.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I would like to, I guess, move to direct staff to, uh, evaluate relocating and replacing the old airplane float and bringing it back to us.
Can I call point of order? Um, we're not allowed to add, um, action items to the agenda.
I specifically requested it to be an action item.
And then the mayor changed it on the pending agenda, you can look at the minutes. That's how it got done, it got put on the way I usually put it on, that's a, a report from, I mean, a resolution from a commission usually comes where I put it. I, I can see moving it to another item if you wanna call it a discussion item, but okay, we can't add a, um, an action item on the agenda, but if you wanna call this something different from that and allow it to go, we can do that.
We can, we can put it on the next agenda as an action item. Yeah. That's fine. I, I would think that that's probably the best thing to do. That's what I was trying to do last time. Right, yeah, I understand, well, make sure it's done instead.
So that's, uh, are there any comments on the letter itself besides?
On the resolution?
Or the, no, what do we have?
The resolution, right?
Resolutions.
Well, the resolution from the Harbor Commission.
Yes.
Not our resolution. It's not our resolution, okay. Thank you. So let's, let's move along then to pending agenda and we can.
Well, you can still discuss it, I don't, I mean.
Okay, well, let's discuss it.
Okay, well, I, you know,
You wanted an action.
I, I did, but, uh, you know, I still like the chance to discuss it, so I, I think that this is something that, um, you know, many members of the community are concerned with, we've at the Harbor Commission level had many people in our audience the last couple meetings, way more than normal. And, uh, even here tonight, we had a great number of people speak on this. Um, I believe that we have, and as the Harbor Commission has outlined here, we have an opportunity to possibly refurbish the existing airplane float, relocate it over to North Harbor. This came up because for the last few years, we had been planning on a new one as part of the PAP project. Well, city staff informed us that was no longer on the table, and, um, they took it out of the proposal, uh, the grant application, that we were told it was a pass or do not pass conversation, it was not an opportunity to add things back in. And so this was a, you know, uh, compromise of, okay, well, if we're not gonna get a new one, maybe we can rehabilitate the old one. In twenty seventeen, we evaluated it, we had PND come to town, they gave us a quote for three hundred and forty thousand dollars to rebuild it as is in its existing location. Obviously, things have changed since then, it probably cost substantially more, but a new one, we were quoted three to four million dollars. Rebuilding the old one is still gonna be cheaper than that, even if we relocated. So I would like to see us direct, um, the next pending agenda or whatever it may be, I would like to see us get a report back from staff on how much would it cost to rebuild, how much would it cost to relocate? And then we can decide at that point if we wanna proceed on it, but we need to have the information, and so far, it's just been a stone wall, we heard earlier, uh, from the city manager that is off the table, well, you know what, it's not her call, it's our call. She works for us, we need to have the conversation before we make that decision, so. Uh, for that reason, I ask for it to be on this agenda, I'm asking for it to be on the next agenda, and I think it's something we should be looking at, and we do have funding coming. We have disaster preparations, we have probably a million bucks coming to Cordova for the next three years, so. Maybe we don't have the money today, but we do have the money coming, so it might be somewhere we set the pieces aside at the, at the landfill where we can rebuild it later. The only parts that are good that could be reused are the concrete, so that's the only part we really need to save. The rest of it, yeah, when we rebuild it, it would be, you know, have to be taken apart anyway, so we could reuse the, the concrete floors. We've rebuilt other parts of this harbor with pretty great success, if you look at the finger floats, we did it in-house, we did it very cheaply. It's, it, it can be done. So, yeah, thank you.
Well, I, I'm not quite sure that's what the city manager said as far as it's off the table, but let's look at it this way, uh, I don't wanna direct staff to it, I wanna hear from the, from the Harbor Commission, what their thoughts are, I wanna hear from the Harbor Commission where exactly they would put this, if they could rebuild it. And we were told, and maybe it was unofficial, that engineers are, have looked at this and recommended that it's not viable. I don't know if that was just a quick look, if we paid for that opinion. But I certainly, I certainly wouldn't enter into putting any money into this thing until an engineer did look at it and said, this, these are the steps you're gonna have to take, someone's invested hundreds of thousands of dollars, but so there's a lot of questions in this, but I think first of all, the Harbor Commission needs to come say, we agree with this, this is where we would put it if we could rebuild it, this is how we go about it, and, and then where the, where the money's gonna come from, I don't know what that money was originally slated for, the disaster relief, and the time you take money for one bucket, what's, how is that working, who allocates that? If it's the harbors that spend, anyway, you wanna spend, I haven't heard that, so. I'm a little bit cautious about how we're going about this, I don't think quote-unquote directing staff to do something without Harbor Commission winging in on this would be the correct way to start this.
But, uh, this originated from Harbor Commission.
Yeah, they're just asking for funding, right?
Funding and support.
Yeah, support, well. What does that support mean, staff goes out?
You, you can't make a decision without the information.
Yeah.
I think it's what this all started. Yeah, this all started at the Harbor Commission. When I asked for this to be evaluated, and this is what the city staff promised. S, the Harbor Commission cannot direct staff to do anything, they're a advisory commission, all they can do is request council to do it. So that is what they've done, and they've asked for us to, you know, have this evaluated and to potentially fund it.
Okay, where, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't mean to speak to the manager, but as a councilperson, where is the request from the Harbor Commission to, to, uh, appropriate money to get that thing engineered, to see if it's viable? Do we have requests from the Harbor Commission for that? Because without that, staff can't go out and just spend money on it, let's go take a look at this, I don't, I don't think. Would that come to council at any point? Is, and it, and I guess I'm saying that and asking that is, wouldn't that be the appropriate way to get this moving down the line, the Harbor Commission commands to do that? Basically, we feel that it's rebuildable, we would like funds to look at it, this kinda says to rebuild or to, it's, I don't know. Am I wrong, am I reading this, or?
The Harbor Commission believes that it's possible to refurbish the airplane float and relocate to the North Harbor, and whereas if the cost for repairs outweighs the cost of replacement, then the Harbor Commission will request additional funding. I don't, I don't understand, I mean, that's right here.
Where is the additional funding gonna come from? And funding for?
Well, I think the first thing we need to, we need to, is the information if we're even gonna consider it. I, I, I think their urgency is that we heard tonight, and we've heard several meetings in the past, that that these things are going to the dump and getting driven over by a, by a loader and pushed into the, into the ground atop our landfill.
They would have to come out of the harbor anyway, though, right, even if it were refurbished?
Oh, sure, yeah, yeah, I, I don't know, I'm not an engineer, so I don't know how that, how that works.
So if that's the case, when they're not, it doesn't matter, you pull them out, they're upset, if we're waiting on engineering? I, I don't know, I'm, I'm trying to find a way to get this, so, but I'm asking questions on how we hit there.
I really need to make a comment, I know I'm out of order, um, may I say something?
Go ahead.
I would rather hear from Councilmember Sherman.
Uh, staff has the information that's floating around here that has not been surfaced, so I'm happy to, to start.
I would, I would love to hear what you have to say.
Okay, good.
But I would like to hear what Councilmember Sherman has to say.
Thank you very much. Um, so I'm just jumping ahead here to pending agenda, and I see that we have a joint city council Harbor Commission meeting sometime during second quarter twenty-twenty-three. I know that Helen and staff have the information we need to see, and it was a great point. Why don't we just have our meeting with the Harbor Commission, everyone on the Harbor Commission, and hear what they have to say, and then we can learn, they can learn our process, and that solves so many things, and we'll move this.
That's why we're not pending agenda.
For three years.
No, we understand the importance of this, and now we can meet with the Harbor Commission and discuss it and get the information that staff already has. We're just, yeah, do it in order.
We can't make a decision tonight anyway, right?
Yeah.
Does that take form as a, a work session, is that how those, really?
Yeah, I think, I, we talk about it, I think, yeah.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, can I ask the, the, um, um, staff to?
Yeah.
Stay on there, I say.
I'm gonna defer to the meeting.
You're a bit of a politician. Okay, so are we ready to go to pending agenda?
Sure.
I think so.
Put that on top of the list. Whether, when are we gonna meet with the Harbor Commission?
Someone tell me.
Next week, let's do it.
I'm, I'm game anytime. What's, are you still on noon meeting?
I would like to request that we give staff time to prepare materials that have been raised in the meetings, so that you have the information you need, um, and, um, I, I think that is gonna take more than one week.
Let's, uh, maybe we should talk about if we're gonna have our second June meeting.
Oh, I think we are.
Yeah, we are, we have a ton of things on it already, so that's a yes.
I'm opposed to a special meeting, if we need to, whenever staff is ready.
Um, wait, special meeting for what, we're doing a work session with Harbor?
Work session.
Oh, okay. Um.
Can you do that before the meeting?
Sure, is that what you wanna do? Uh.
The next council public hearing, you said, right?
No.
It's the longest day of the year, we can.
Really where I wanna.
Really stretching.
Yeah, right.
Is there cell service from Hook Point?
I don't know. Not much.
So you'll, you'll, you'll be able to tell us.
So six o'clock on the twenty-first, joint work session with Harbor? Yeah?
Works for me.
Yes.
And we hope that the Harbor Commission is available, so we might need to just confirm.
Yes. Yeah.
And we specifically want so on a regular agenda for that meeting, do you want an action item?
Yeah, I mean, if they're, that's tough because depending on how that workshop goes, they could.
Well, we can always take it off.
Yeah.
The agenda, if we don't put it on for the advertising, then it's.
I just wanna make sure we properly vet and evaluate this before it gets to the dump in September.
Yeah. And that certainly won't happen until, when we set down.
Well, if that's the case, then could we maybe wait until July? Till the July fifth, maybe?
We wanna test the Hook Point.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure we will, yeah.
Yeah, we can, I mean.
Um, I'm gonna try anyway, but I just would really like to be.
Yeah, there would be staff an extra couple of weeks, because if only we got one week. You know, but materials have to be in within a week, so a week early, you know, so.
Yeah, I probably won't be here in person, hopefully I can call in on the fifth, that's normally when all these picks start, so the, most of the fleet, and I think three of us on Harbor Commission will probably end up there. But, I mean, Wednesday nights in general are tough for fishermen to make anyway, so.
But we don't, it doesn't have to be on a Wednesday night for me.
Yeah, a, a noon meeting would be.
I'd rather do noon on the fifth.
I, I would.
I would, yeah, I mean.
The twenty-fifth of point.
Okay.
The twenty, the nineteenth.
So noon on the?
So noon on Wednesday, July fifth.
Um, and the other option, of course, is to just do a special. That could be at any point in time.
Maybe we get, it's based on the availability of Harbor Commission members, you know, fish, yeah.
So last week of June, for instance, you know, somewhere between the
I'm just, I'm gonna defer to you, what, I mean, you, you know better on what the fleet's gonna be doing if we want a presence from Harbor Commission. Not that you can speak for all of them, but.
Really, June and July both suck, um, you know, everybody's heading across and the sailors are getting ready, it's tough to get any, any fishermen in the room this time of year, so.
Well, do you wanna wait till, on, early, what's the early August one, I mean, that first week of?
That's probably worse, honestly.
The se, August second is a Wednesday.
Um, we have.
Yeah, I mean, it's better if you don't have to leave, uh, worse if you say please.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, there's no good time for that until, until September now.
Which then is too late for us to have it evaluated. Which then is too late for us to stand and evaluate it, so...
And I think that that's why they're pushing too close to September. That risks kind of, well, we're trying to have a conversation about...
Try for July.
Noon, July 5th, we'll try.
Make sure that was...
Sure.
The scarring resolution?
Yes. I would also request that maybe staff can dig up the PMDP report that we got in 2017.
I think we have a more updated one.
A more updated one. I would like to see the 2017 one as well.
Any repairs that have been done on it since then?
Anything else on the pending agenda? What else have we got for...
Request. Is it possible to do a presentation under guest speakers on the 21st about the Pennsylvania...
I think I heard that you were, as a matter of fact, already.
I think the shared outline was the July meeting, right?
Correct. The first July meeting. And then NVE will be here on the 21st. And CCMC has an audit to give us. But I may just not, maybe just put summary in the packet and put the whole of it behind it like the way I did with that appraisal tonight. So those are just some things I already know are coming for the next one. Does anybody want to do anything with ordinance 1207?
What are the options?
The options are to... I don't know.
It's the courses. Can it be brought forward again as a first reading?
As a new ordinance, yeah. That's what the attorneys told me. I don't know if the whole of the process has to start over. I don't know. I'd need two of you to tell me to do something with it if you want to. That's all I'm saying.
Well, I would entertain bringing it back as it is currently written. Yep, I agree with that. I support that.
Two, okay.
I can, I can accept that it was turned down. But I can't accept that it was turned down by such a minority. I said at the last meeting, we need to have seven representatives at these meetings when we make major decisions with the community. Seven five is not acceptable. There are phones. So, and that was really my council comment, but we're talking about it now. So I would like to see it back. I'd like to see it when we can get seven council people in a room to have this discussion.
I would like to see it brought back in October. I think I made that motion last year.
Yeah.
What are the people who are telling me to bring it forward, telling me to do it?
I would like it brought forward as soon as possible, which I guess is either the next meeting or the July 5th meeting. I prefer the July 5th meeting or whenever we have the biggest...
I don't know the rules on wanting to push something to a time when more people might be there. Like, you know, when we, say, October, because 95% of the fleet would be here in October. You know, I respect and understand the rule about wanting seven council members, but I don't think there's any rules on that either. It's just a quorum.
The majority of the council?
It's just a quorum, yeah, that can have, conduct business and have...
It's just a disappointment.
I agree. I mean, I agree there, but...
Is there any rules on when something fails? How long you have to wait to bring it back?
No.
Does it come back as a first reading?
It comes back with a new number as a new ordinance.
And so it's still be first reading and it'll be second reading?
Correct.
Okay.
July, July, August, September, October.
I would like to...
Forty thousand dollars. No, it's not.
No, it's not a year.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Wait for us to...
Then October's fine for me.
It is, yeah. I would like to see it brought back with some alternatives that haven't even been discussed yet because it wasn't the only thing pursued.
Well, we'd have to do two readings again, right?
Yeah.
So the first reading you could make, well, then it's a substantial change, then it has to go another way.
No, but we, we got around that last time because it's actually just giving Helen the responsibility to do minor adjustments like she did with the CIP.
Could the criteria be we'd like to bring it back where we, there's a stronger likelihood of having full council presence? And can you poll council members and ask about their...
The word poll sounds, and I, to the open meetings act, right there.
About attendance?
Yeah.
We set the agenda a week in advance, but we never know who's coming until the day of, so...
I mean, unless you guys want to start telling me sooner and more definitively when you're going to be at meetings and when you're not. Because it is a little stressful on a Wednesday afternoon.
And I think that comes back to, I mean, just redoing other municipalities' codes that actually probably were entering, changing our codes. That's what we're...
And that discussion is coming on the next agenda as well, the teleconference. Possibly lending teleconference.
Could we shoot for July 5th then?
Yeah. Okay, not June 21st?
No, July 5th.
Okay.
I don't think, well, my opinion, I guess, is that it's been three years. I don't think that a month or two is going to make a break for this whole, this whole thing. I'd rather do it right and do it affirmatively than, than keep on failing it for, for lack of having enough people here.
Do we have a table of attendance? Do you keep that?
Yes, I do.
Is that something we can publish in?
Absolutely. Mm-hmm. Do you want me to do that?
That'd be great.
Just 2023?
Or just, I think, I think it should just be added to the back.
Oh.
In the pending agenda primer or something. I don't know.
I guess I would want all of you guys to tell me that. I don't want one person telling me. Absolutely, I have done it.
Before.
Yeah.
This doesn't part of the clerk's report?
Yeah.
So every meeting or quarterly?
Yeah, maybe quarterly.
Yeah.
Anything else on the pending agenda?
No, it's enough. It's 9:44.
It's enough, all right. Audience participation. Any comments on anything that you'd like? Doesn't have to be on the agenda, but it can be, so...
John Hurdle again. I would really like to thank you for voting for this revolution in fashion. I can assure you, those of you who know me, I have an environmental project of oil pipe properties. To Christian even issued me a win certificate during the environmental science center. I believe in protecting the environment, so I can assure you, we are going to work with the environmental community. My goal tonight is to try to request a Smith's vote to vote for this project when we get done doing it. And I will get it done, you watch, okay? No, it's in need to, it's in need to have where we can all live with it. That's important, and I want to do that. I'm sorry about the slobbering, but they cut my jaw off and put a new one in and doesn't work very well. Also, I want to make one comment on number 20. I live here in Cidoba, and I believe the EAPs are very important upon this community. My concern is if they have a road that goes out to Shepherd Point and we do not, and we say we, everybody have access out there. If everybody, if they have the right to build store buildings, hotels, restaurants out there. So when cruise ships come, I know they're not, but when they do come, the people who have all those cruise ships will have the ability to come to town and spend their money, not get slapped out there with no ability to make sure they can come to town. I hope when you negotiate your deal, you negotiate it so it has ability for everyone in this town showing a stop on their, they're going to have a stop on their, showing everything it's going to be, so everybody in this community can enjoy the asset. Thank you very much, and I do thank you all again for working with us. We're going to make this right. Watch it.
Thank you, John. Appreciate everything you do for the community as well. Anybody else?
Thank you very much. Thank you for supporting us. We're really ashamed of that.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any comments? Okay, moving on to council.
Sorry, I just have this one. This might be more of a question. I would really love to see the city council meetings streamed again. I don't know if that was just a COVID thing, but I was enjoying watching them. It's a little late to be out away from my child, but I'd love to watch them at home if you guys consider doing that in the future.
Yeah, we're having some technical, technical difficulties with the teleconference and that, and all working together with the teleconference and the stream. But we're, we're working on that. Yeah, it is the intent to get that back working for everybody, so... Okay, moving on then to council comments. Councilor Kinsman.
Thank you all. This was a lot tonight. It was good. I know ordinance 1207 probably got passed the way some people wanted it to. I would like moving forward to see some different options there. I'm afraid we're just going to get into a stagnant position on it. But I do appreciate what Councilmember Baylor said. It was a little bit disappointing not to see a full quorum here represented one way or another. What I am afraid of seeing moving forward is that now we're isolating some of maybe our, our staff who is fishing and when we come to another vocal, that we run into that scenario as well. So hopefully, we're able to come up with some kind of solution. I don't entirely know what that looks like, but I look forward to learning what that can look like and making that a win-win for our entire community. I know the city manager mentioned that we need to look at things more holistically as it affects the whole community. And that's, and that kind of is the approach I'm looking at for that, that piece of our harbor base, and that is very limited. We know it's, it's a finite amount of space. So I just want to make sure we're being the best stewards of that space as far as utilization and making sure that we have all the options of what could go in there. With that, I'm going to say that's all at 9:49 tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Sherman.
Sure, I wanted to just, it was really fun to have a live audience tonight. And full complement of people, not quite full, but full stop. And then I just wanted to comment briefly. I really appreciate Dave Jenka as our RCA C rep. Those reports are wonderful. And I, I mean, I actually went in and delved into the reports and read the links. I learned a lot, and that's really useful to have. So I really appreciate him as our representative on there. And that's all I'm going to say, except I will try hard to get cell reception at the point.
That's our results.
Yeah, I'm a little disappointed that we're just going to bring it right back. You know, I think it failed. We should be looking at alternatives. I missed a pending agenda, but I would like to see us follow up on our housing work session that we did sooner rather than later. I don't want to lose momentum on that, so, thank you.
Councilmember Baylor. Yeah, it was a good, good conversation. Said this for the last 15, 16 years sort of publicly. Don't take it personal. These are discussions we have. We try to do what's best for the community. It's not my own opinion. People I talked to also. And, and words do matter as far as the, what CAM2 is trying to write. When we adopted our last comprehensive plan, I don't think anybody saw it. I didn't see if it was passed, but somebody slipped the word in calling all of us out here as critical habitat. And there was no scientific basis for it. Dean and I didn't say it. It was just a couple of locals that slipped that word in there. And so when, when we did see it, we went back, council went back and said, I don't know what word it is, so I will have tap or half tap. But anyway, we all have to pay attention as these things come through because that would have stopped that project without any question. There would have been no permitting for something in critical habitat. So, yes, we got to save what we can, but we like to live on the edge of a park. We got to make a living too.
Councilmember Gerbinder.
Thanks. Thanks to staff for doing the work on getting the financial system going. I'd be glad to be working toward getting a system that is going to pump out reliable numbers. And I want to thank Kevin for the work on the address system because that's been years in the making. And I'm sure you had to chip away mightily at that. So thanks for getting that going. And I, I know we don't have a solution for it. It's going to be a sticky wicket, but I think the burn pile is a problem. I mean, I moved my office from the Pioneer Building on First Street out to the new Science Center building. And I walked in the building today and boom, you could smell smoke immediately. And it's, it's pretty bad. I think we've all, I know it's nothing like what we're seeing on the news with what's happening in New York City and the Northeast today, but, but the research shows that particulate matter is bad for public health. And so at some point, I think it's going to be something we'll have to face. And I also am still concerned about trash at the boatyard, stuff getting blown onto the other side of the road. I was running today and I saw a five gallon bucket and some of that closed cell phone that's used for shipping. And I stuffed it in the bucket and I went and set it down next to the full moon. So if harbor staff is out there tomorrow, somebody could maybe pick it up. But, but there's all kinds of trash that gets blown into that ditch across the way. And so I, I've said this before, I just get frustrated when we have sort of a cleanup and rely on volunteers to go out and clean up what people are careless about in the boatyard. And so I'm just asking for more messaging, I guess, to go to the users there to ask them to keep, keep a hold of their trash. I think that's it. Thank you.
Okay, that's it for agenda, right? Additional, so business being done, move along.